Pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given January 18, 2019. The meeting will convene at 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the Secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. The general items are subject to reorder and at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire board meeting to assure you are able to hear any discussion. Thank you.
He said it was not a direct. It's just that this is what the community is doing.
Yeah.
He's going to take off his hat. He's going to take off his hat. We just manage it. Because he doesn't like that. He bothers himself. I can't even do that. You say please.
Probably relatively. I'd say 715.
Pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Servicing Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, February 4th, 2019 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 on Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Holman will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
The vision: Every student, every day, prepared for success. The mission: Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snipe.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Moving on to School Spotlight with Ms. Kayla Morrissey. Mrs., I apologize.
Good evening, Board President Snow, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Logan. We are pleased to present the 2019 Build Up Omaha honorees as tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight. Every year Civic Nebraska honors nine Omahans who have made a positive impact in their community. Build Up Omaha honorees include five adults and four youth who have demonstrated exceptional civic leadership and who embody Civic Nebraska's vision of a modern and robust democracy. Four OPS students were awarded this year. We'd like to congratulate Regina Oye Bunam, an eighth grader at Lewis and Clark Middle School, Kalisha Dunn, a fourth grader at Lothup Magnet Elementary, Kylie Penix, a fifth grader at Sherman Elementary, and Arisala Gonzalez Diaz, a seventh grader at Norris Middle School. These four students will be celebrated for their civic leadership at a formal dinner tomorrow evening, and we commend these students for engaging in activities that promote education and community leadership. At this time, we welcome Site Director from Lewis and Clark Middle School, Tracy White, to the podium for remarks.
Good evening, President Snow, Dr. Logan, and the members of the Board. My name is Tracy White, and I'm representing Civic Nebraska and our three after-school programs and our one enrichment program with Lewis and Clark Middle School, Lothup Magnet School, Sherman Elementary, and the Circles Program at Norris Middle School. These programs are all under the umbrella of Collective for Youth, who is our fiscal agency. We're honored to be here to recognize the accomplishments and fortitude of our OPS students, Regina, Kalisha, Kylie, and Arisala. We're also grateful for the support of our principals, Dr. Lisa Sturba, Mr. Gary Westbrook, Mrs. Mary Greiger, and Dr. Carrie Carr. Our endeavors at Civic Nebraska through the CLC programs are to empower and activate youth to be the change they wish to see in their communities. Thank you again for this opportunity to be a part of the OPS Proud Spotlight. Thank you.
If you lovely ladies, I apologize, I'm still sick a little bit, but if you can introduce yourself, tell us what grade you're in and what school.
Hello, my name is Regina Oye Bunam. I am an eighth grader at Lewis and Clark.
Hello, my name is Arisala Gonzalez Diaz, and I'm the seventh grader in Norris Middle School.
My name is Kalisha Dunn, and I'm in fourth grade, and my school is Lothup Magnet.
So if one of you could tell the Board and everyone watching at home, just a little information, what is Build Up Omaha? We have some beautiful pens for whoever decides to take us on this.
Build Up Omaha is about wanting to make your community better in the way that you envision it to be and doing positive actions to make your community better and reach that goal.
That's amazing. Any other additions to what Build Up Omaha is from the two of you? Well, thank you. Well, I'm going to open up for Board members for questions if they have a view. Dr. Holman.
Can you tell us all a little bit about some projects or some activities that you have participated in?
So some projects that we, that in my, in my club, kind of that we have after school is called Circles, and we do a lot of projects where we basically talk about how women can do things other than we, women, us women, that we can do things that men and women have equal rights. So we've been going out to like fighter fighter places, constructions, we've been talking to a lot of different type of women that do jobs that are just for men. And we go out, we went to a homeless shelter, and we went to go help out there too. We have done a whole bunch of different activities that we just, that I really love doing and are, just make me really happy going to them and seeing all these people and making them smile and just like them having a really great day because of what we did for them. And all the stuff that we do for them, we are not getting, we don't want nothing out of it, we're just doing it because we want to do it and we want to show that we can make a difference in our community. So that's basically it.
Anyone else?
So right now at Lewis and Clark in our after-school program, we made a goal to make 1,000 Valentine's Day cards for the Marines fighting ISIS right now. And today and the previous week, we've been making cards for them. And it's going to be a lot of work, but it's fun making them.
Work before we move on, how many cards did you guys make?
Right now, I believe we are halfway through 100.
Wow.
We got 150.
150.
Thank you. Any other colleagues on the Board? Well, we would love to take a picture with you and have you plastered all over the district website, shake your hand, and congratulate you for making us OPS proud. So everyone here, would you guys please give them a round of applause again? We're about to shake your hand.
Yeah, we just did that, so.
Do you have any family, friends, releasing, you guys, principal staff, everybody, all over there?
That's all. We're all proud. We are proud.
Okay, big smiles. One, two, three. Go take one more. One, two, three. And we have Dr. Sturba here. One, two, three.
Moving on to Item G, G1, Treasurer's Report. Mrs. Berg. Make sure you click on your mic. There we go. Sorry.
So you all received and saw the Treasurer's Report for end of period November. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you. Also, we have Superintendent's Report. Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Snow, members of the Board of Education, and those here in the audience this evening. I want to begin my remarks this evening by acknowledging that today, January 23rd, is I Love Public Schools Day. The observance was created by Nebraska Loves Public Schools to celebrate the staff, teachers, and students who support public schools across the state. Visit Nebraska Loves Public Schools website and their social media pages to really see some amazing stories about public schools across the state of Nebraska, including Omaha Public Schools. And they have a, they have a hashtag, #IlovePublicSchools on social media. So please share the great things that have been happening all day. I know that I've seen some of them on social media. And thank you to the folks here that are here in the audience tonight to celebrate public schools. Also, on Monday, this past Monday, we took time out to acknowledge the anniversary of the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I was able to attend a luncheon, and there were some notable students there, principally from Central High School. Mr. Groff of Central High School brought a group of Central High School Eagles to that event, which I thought was a great way to highlight that's not just a day off, it's a day of service and a day of remembrance. And also Mr. Gene Haynes was also there. Go Vikings. If I don't say that, Mr. I get in trouble. Today was our first day back. I just want to make a couple of announcements about inclement weather events. We were all Friday and yesterday. These calls are always very difficult. I will also say that one complicating factor on this, this round of weather was that the weather, the National Weather Service, due to the government shutdown, is not operating at 100%. So we are typically, I have an opportunity to attend webinars and get more updated information, but we certainly were able to feel the impact of that in terms of the quantity and quality of weather reports that we were receiving. It also should be noted for those who have children in the district that a third of our students, 18,000, ride the bus to and school from, every day. What we do not want to do is unnecessarily place students on slick roads during a significant weather event, but at some point, we do have to return to school. So please know, please know, yes, and that goes for the teachers too. Please know there is a team of administrators actively monitoring the weather regularly and that we do get on a call in the morning to monitor road conditions. I also want to thank those folks who tweet out at me when I send out a tweet. And to my high schoolers and to some adults who send some tweets that are not so kind, please know that I will clap back at you. I'm not kidding. I think that we can have, you can disagree with the decision, but one of the things that we don't want to do is monitor poor behavior, I'm sorry, is model poor behavior for our young people and young people that goes for you too, that we do expect if you do, if you disagree with the decision and you want to voice your opinion, there is a way to do so without using curse words and always being civil. So always want to take that time to teach that lesson. I'm always going to be a teacher at heart. The All-City Music Festival is going on on February 3rd, if you have an opportunity to go to that. It's at the Holland Performing Arts Center. It's February 2nd at 7:30 and Sunday at 2:00. The Super Bowl doesn't come on until 5:00 PM, so you'll have plenty of time to support our young people, and the Chiefs aren't in it anyway, so what's the use? And get back home to watch the game. So please make sure if you have an opportunity to get out to that event and support our young people. Two final shout-outs that are, I feel there are many on here, but two that I really want to highlight. Burke High School will offer the AP Capstone Diploma Program to its students. It is a diploma program from the College Board, which is based on two-year-long AP courses, AP Seminar, and AP Research. Students that complete the program can earn an advanced diploma. It's a pretty rigorous program, and I am familiar with it from my prior district and very excited about our young people beginning that here in the state of Nebraska. And lastly, this is always nice, when folks apply for and get many grants, many grants. The National Jewish Council of Jewish Women has an opportunity to receive many grants, and winners included teachers from Edison, Harrison, Jocelyn, Picot, Standing Bear, Walnut Hills, and Western Hills Elementary Schools, Lewis and Clark, McMillan Magnet Middle Schools, and then also Benson High, Burke, and Northwest High Magnet Schools. So teachers, thank you for taking the time out to write those grants. They may be many grants, but they certainly probably likely will have a large impact on our young people, and thank you for that, and to the Council for Jewish Women for sponsoring those. Those conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Board Members. Mr. Pearlman. I believe you're in one up a little bit. Mrs. Crackey.
I'm missing seeing the Jewish women today. Sometimes, in the past, they always came down and we got to hear them present these awards. You can't hear me?
No, I was just saying you have one sitting next to you.
From your Holocaust thing that is on the page, that's how I know that, otherwise I wouldn't have known that. So you're the one that's going to present those to them. They do such a good job, and they've done that over the years, over and over and over, and we've had them come down, and I just am missing their presence, I think, today. And that was one of the things I wanted to say. And we're always, we kind of like to see what they do with their grants too. I'd like to have more information at some point with them and what they do, because they all do something different and interesting. I'd like to see that. Thank you. And then I, one more thing, I did visit a Columbia School, I went to their music program. They had the fourth and fifth grade Vocal Strings and Band winner program, and it was very good. I always like to go there, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pearlman.
Yes, just briefly, thank you. Just want to address an article or two that maybe some people in this room have read over the past couple of Sundays regarding the OSERS shortfall in the pension situation. You know, it just, I guess it kind of jumps out to me that there's been a lot written, but one thing that hasn't, that I've never read over those two long articles is any acknowledgement of, of any one of even making maybe a bad decision, no less an apology or any semblance of taking any responsibility, and that's really troubling to me. This was all before our time. There are two OPS Board Members here who were trustees, and I want to acknowledge Lauren Gadding for stepping up, acknowledging the problem, and taking steps immediately to try to do what she can to try to protect the retirement funds for all of our teachers in OPS, which also affects every student and staff member in OPS. Hopefully, one way or another, there will be responsibility taken on the part of people who made these decisions, because from everything that I've read and everything that I know, these decisions weren't just bad decisions, they were inexcusable decisions. And they're just being defended now, and if there's good defenses for them, I'm ready to hear them. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other Board Member comments? Okay, moving on to public comment, Item I. We have two speakers. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining, when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide that to Mr. Ray, and he will make sure each Board Member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is 652, and our first speaker is Dr. Donna Polk.
Good evening. My name is Donna L. Polk, D-O-N-N-A-L, capital P-O-L-K. My address is 3526 104th Avenue in Omaha, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to support the teachers. As the CEO of Nebraska Urban Indian Health, we work with a lot of families in the community. The majority of them are Native Americans. We are very conscious of some of the issues that our children face in their efforts to obtain an education in OPS. I believe that the teachers are downstream, they're literally catching our kids without really knowing what's going on upstream. I would support any effort to pay them a decent salary with benefits so that they can do a job that many of them probably had no idea they would be confronted with when they graduated from our post-secondary institutions. We want to do more at Nebraska Urban Indian Health upstream to try to figure out how we can help our kids be prepared to go to the educational institutions that are a part of OPS. Thank you, and I don't know if you have questions?
We typically do not respond for public comment, but Mr. Ray will have your information, and he'll pass it on to every Board Member that if they have any comments or questions, they can reach out to you. Thank you, Mr. Snow. Thank you, Dr. Polk. Our next speaker is Alex Gates.
Thank you. My name is Alex Gates, G-A-T-E-S. My address is 2612 North 97th Avenue. I live in Sub-District 3. I want to begin by thanking each and every one of you for the work that you do for our school district and our community. I recognize that you aren't paid for all this work, despite the fact that it consumes a lot of your time. Every day you are tasked to make difficult decisions for the 53,000 students and the thousands of teachers, administrators, and support staff who rely on your clear thinking and thoughtful approach to overseeing our school district. Oftentimes, you're asked to clean up unfortunate situations with roots that began growing years before your service began on the Board. I know this isn't easy, but a simple thank you often goes unsaid, so thank you for all you do. It's no secret that there's a lot of uncertainty surrounding the current OPS pension shortfall. It's no secret that there's a lot of uncertainty surrounding the current OPS pension shortfall. Finding appropriate ways to correct the situation is unquestionably difficult. As some board members have correctly stated, the effects of the shortfall will be felt for many, many years to come. That's a tremendous amount of pressure. Tonight, I'm here as a father of four young children, three of whom are in OPS. I'm here as a PTA dad who has developed friendships with educators who have shaped my children's lives. I'm here because I have sadly witnessed a number of gifted educators leave Omaha Public Schools for neighboring districts, where they receive better pay, smaller class sizes, and more administrative support. As you're looking for ways to recover from the pension shortfall, I hope you'll prioritize the women and men in our district who give so much for our children. Please consider the message you are sending to our teachers when you say you can't increase the salary scale for them while your executive team still sees more money. Examine the benefits packages afforded to the executive team at TAC as you justify placing the burden of increased insurance costs on your teachers. Consider the message you are sending to our veteran teachers and building leaders when you insist on freezing the LSI. There's no question that we'll be feeling the effects of the pension shortfall for many years to come, but don't disregard the effects of undervaluing our teachers and building leaders, especially in this worsening teacher shortage in Nebraska. We can't afford to lose our best to neighboring districts. As an OPS parent and taxpayer, I urge you to pay our teachers fairly and prioritize compensation in order to attract and retain teachers. As you know, the best and brightest building leaders in our district were once classroom teachers. We can't afford to lose them. Thank you.
We do have our consent agenda in front of us, but before we approve the consent agenda, I would like to switch something around a little bit. If you guys on the board go to item J2A and click on the 2009 High School Update, we're approving the schematic design tonight, so it's probably best we get the full update before we approve it. So I will move that around just for that update and allow Mr. Mark Summers, if I'm correct, to present on the High School Update, then we'll approve the consent agenda and continue the rest of the meeting. That'd be Susan Christofferson, Dr. Susan Christofferson, and Mr. Mark Summers.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Thank you for having us. My esteemed colleague here, Susan Christofferson, has been a very integral part of the design process that we're going to kind of provide a quick update on tonight for the board. A couple of things that we wanted to touch on this evening is just general overview of the project, some of the timeline, a little bit of the technical aspects of the project, and then Susan's going to talk a little bit about the academic components and some of the early thinking of program offerings, and then just different aspects or features in the buildings that we've been really focused on over the last couple of months. And just to let the board know from an understanding, schematic design is really about not the physical shapes of every room and the corridors, it's really about the relationships of the spaces. So where's the office going to go in relationship to the counselor center, and what's that relationship to the students, and where is the dining area going to be in the relationship of that to where food comes in through the receiving dock? So I just want to make sure, from a footprint perspective, there's some general shapes, but at the end of the day, it may not look exactly like that. It may be a little bit longer, it may be a little bit wider, it just depends on how the actual design evolves. And ultimately, code has something to do with that with travel distances and other things. So just wanted to kind of set the stage of what schematic design is. One of the great things that we've been able to take advantage of is input from really a really broad group of individuals that represent the district at different levels. I had an opportunity to tour multiple high school locations with Dr. Logan and several board members, and then also provide an opportunity for those board members to kind of download and debrief and say, these are some things that we like, these are some questions that we still have, how would this operate inside of the school district? So we've been able to take that information. Recently, we've had some community meetings, and then in addition to that, during the whole conceptual design process, we had a lot of community input on what are the types of things that they would like to see in the building? What is their perspective, again, on Media Center? Where should that be located in the building? Should we have a whole bunch of lockers and long corridors, or no? Should we move away from those types of things? But again, just gathering input, really working on the student perspective, because ultimately, all the decisions that we're trying to make are really focused on the student and what's going to maximize their learning experience. Of course, the YMCA has had, we've had a lot of discussions with them related to 156 and Ida Street site, and what does the integration of that building look like? The city of Omaha, ultimately, they're the authority in the marketplace. We need to have our plans approved by them, so it's important for us to understand what expectations they have as far as access to the site, et cetera. And then there's a whole list of the different CIS departments that we've been able to engage with and talk specifically, not only about kind of size of space, but again, where do they see a good fit inside of the building? Who do they work with well from a neighbor perspective? And if performing arts is here, what's really nice to have next to it just for access? Okay, the auditorium is great. From an athletics perspective, how do we want to kind of combine those things? And then ultimately, as you folks know, there's no building principal to kind of guide the process, so we've been able to utilize a lot of input from the building principals of the high schools that are adjacent to. So Burke and Northwest have helped us a lot on the 156 and Ida Street site, and South and Bryan have provided us good input on the 60th and L Street site. So again, trying to find a way to blend all these different perspectives and stakeholders into the design is really a fun challenge. Just a quick overview on the 60th and L Street site. It's about a 40-acre site. Of course, it's a new 912 comprehensive high school. It's about 285,000 square feet. Projected enrollment, or our target enrollment is 1,500. The total program budget is $92.4 million, and we're targeting opening for the 22-23 school year. I briefly talked about schematic design in the building organization, so not going to talk anymore about that. What you have here, and of course, it's in the packet in a little bit more detail, is really the site concept. North is at the top of the page. We've highlighted there where the front entry of the building is. So really, the front of this facility will face south or along L Street. On the left-hand side is 60th Street. You can see where there's been some fitting of the baseball fields and the different athletic fields. We're looking at a three-story academic wing, which is on the far south, the smaller rectangle, if you will. And then all the other larger pieces, athletics, performing arts, the dining area, the media center will kind of bridge the two pieces together, but one of the challenges, of course, at the 60th and L Street site is it's only 40 acres, and there's a lot of natural grade change. So the team's really been working hard on placing the building in a location where we don't have to move a bunch of dirt around just to move dirt around. We're just not big fans of spending dollars to do that. So really, placing it kind of on this east boundary is really kind of where it's settled in the best location. And then, once we have building placement, we work a lot with transportation on how do we see bus and automobile traffic separating? The city, again, provides input on what access points they will really allow the district to have off the public right of way. So that's what really shapes the site concept, or has shaped it at 60th and L at this point in time. One thing I will mention that's a little bit more related to the timeline, in the February and March window of time, the contractors will mobilize and start removing trees from the site, so there is activity that's coming pretty close. All of the tree mitigation needs to be completed before April 1st, and that's due to bird migration, so that all that work has to happen before nesting, et cetera. And the city has a very specific protocol and approval process for whenever you remove tree canopy, you have to put so many trees back and make sure that it's equitable and whole. So just to make sure everybody from a community perspective understands, it's not just going in and stripping out all the trees and then leaving nothing. Trees will be planted back at the right ratio, depending on the caliber and the species, et cetera. But there will be activity in the near future at both sites. Do you want to talk about the site at all?
No.
That's okay. So here's the interior space of 60th and L. On the left-hand side is Level 1, it's the level that you'll enter on. You can see there's a little red arrow, and that's indicating the front entryway. A couple of the things that we're really trying to utilize in this space is high flexibility, or being able to use a classroom, not just tying it to math or tying it to English, et cetera. And Susan can talk a little bit more about that, but that's been a big part of the academic development. The Level 0, or sorry, 1 is what you enter on. If you go downstairs in this scenario, you go down to Level 0, so there'll be a top-loading gym at this location. Again, largely, that's just due to the grade of the site and how it kind of climbs up the hill. Transitioning kind of back out up to Level 2, if you will, it's the upper volume of some of the spaces, the gym, the auditorium spaces where the fly loft, et cetera, those kind of parts and pieces are. And then, of course, it's the second level of the academic area. And then the third level is just in the academic wing only and has the three-story. Largely, the academic story will be stacked, so we try to make sure like type of rooms are built on top of each other, just from a utility perspective. When you're running piping and different systems, it's nice to just from an efficiency perspective, have them stacked. So do you want to talk a little bit about some of the academic?
I would love to. We are very excited to be welcoming to potential high schools as they come into the 22 school year. We've really been taking into consideration what will the student experience be like for our students as they come in. We definitely want to make sure that we are providing a very secure environment to our students and to our staff and any of our community that are part of this experience. We really are focusing a lot on collaboration, not only for students as a part of that real school-to-work type of environment, but also for our teachers. We want to not make them in isolation. We want them to have times to be able to collaborate and work together, and so there's spaces for teachers to do that, as well as for students to be able to conduct those types of projects. We've been very thoughtful about the adaptability of space and making that flexible. So things continue to change and evolve. As we look at our high schools that were built in 1924, some of those spaces are hard to work and to manage, and so as we've been working towards this, both DLR and BCDM have been very thoughtful about pushing our thinking to ensure that as we are creating these spaces, that what this space might be today, it might not be that tomorrow. So how do we make sure that we're making the most of the spaces that we are creating there in the building? We've also talked a lot about flexible and movable furniture, so that as our students are doing project-based learning or any type of experience, as you look at our college and career-ready standards, it's all about critical thinking, it's about problem-solving, and actually putting those standards into action, we want to make sure that we're providing that space to do so. And so, as Mark mentioned, both South High School, Bryan High School principals and their staff, as well as Burke and Northwest, have been involved. We were able to actually create some of those classroom spaces in their buildings to see how easily those adaptable spaces can actually happen in buildings that were built a little bit different time than now. And the teachers are absolutely loving the flexibility of the furniture and the spaces. They're able to do so much more with the standards and dive a little deeper into what they're trying to accomplish in the classroom. A little bit more specific about this space, we are looking at having a school-based health center at the 60th and L site. And also, what will be happening in both sites is our administration currently is all, kind of all centered in one area. What we're looking, some of the feedback we heard from students and also from staff, is to actually put the administrators out into the building. So the principal and the data administrator, because they work with registrations and scheduling and things like that, will be located in the main office. As you go into the academic part of the wing, you will be finding your other assistant principals, your student support center, which is your counseling center, will also be located in the academic part of the building. That's where the students are. So we want to make sure that our administrators and our counselors are right there, being a part of that academic experience for our students and staff. We think that'll be a great addition to the collaboration that can be happening for them as well.
Just quickly transitioning to the 156 and Ida Street site, a little bit different, a little larger site, 72.8 acres. Of course, it's the 912 high school and the partnership with the YMCA. The projected size of this facility is 315,000 gross square feet. Again, that's due to the partnership. 1,500 students, design enrollment, and right now, the projected budget, you see the $92 million, is just for the district side of it. We're still working on finalizing Y-square footages and their contribution associated with that. Same target, 22-23 school year from an opening perspective. And so here's the site, again, north is to the top of the screen. 156 is on the right-hand side, and Ida Street is on the south border or on the lower end. You can see how the front entry really lines up well for visibility from both streets, if you will. Again, layout of the practice fields, baseball, softball, the soccer surrounded by the track, of course, parking for all the students and staff. And then bus drop-off is also integrated in. You can kind of see it on the left-hand side as a little loop. But general layout, if you're familiar with the site, it's kind of on the high point of the site, and that'll be very complimentary. Again, similar 60th and L will have a really good vantage point from that up on top of the hill there. Just moving into the interior, this building overall is two levels. You will enter, right now, the plan is to enter on the main level, and to make the school facility and the YMCA facility kind of feel like, one, you'll enter into a common vestibule, and then you'd be able to move into, and it'll be secure, you'd be able to move into the office building, or the office side of the school, if you will, or the receptionist desk, or the assignment desk from the YMCA perspective. So that's what that kind of front entry looks like. Walking into the building, long, wide corridors, administration on the left-hand side, some performing arts on the left-hand side as well. One of the big things that we're really trying to make sure the designs are supportive of are kind of queuing spaces, so that there are large corridor spaces or kind of collaborative areas that feed into the auditorium before a big play, before a sporting event, if you will. People can kind of queue outside and make their way into the gymnasium, where everyone's not just trying to squeeze down a hallway. So the designs complement that very well. And then you can see the larger academic piece on the upper left-hand side of the screen, if you will. Very similar concepts that Susan had mentioned before about really trying to focus in on collaborative spaces for the students that are outside of. Studio is the word that's really been utilized for a classroom, it's just kind of an evolution, but they're really kind of the same type of space. It's how they're going to be used is really going to be the difference. And then this is a two-story structure, as I mentioned. You go up to the second-story structure. Largely, that's all additional academic space. It's a mirror of the first floor, and then it's some of the upper-volume spaces, that the gymnasium, the auditorium, et cetera. So a little bit different scenario from a site perspective, but very comparable from an overall square footage and kind of a feel and function, but trying to make them feel a little bit more university-esque from a use perspective, give students more choices on other spaces to collaborate, some soft furniture, those kinds of things are really where we're at in the discussion. From here, we'll really start detailing what are all the materials inside of the building, where do all the walls specifically go, and what material are there? Where are all the doors? All the definitive pieces will really start coming to light now. Again, this is really just about concepts and relationships in the building, making sure that we have that nailed down before we really cast the die for the actual design work. Do you have anything else, Don?
Only to add that one of the things that we're very cognizant of when we talk about the security, not just the entrance, but just supervision of the building, being very thoughtful of sightlines, where you're at, when you're coming out, supervision of staff, movement of students, we're being very thoughtful about that. Also ensuring that the location of the fields, our physical education, we want to make sure that we're having an opportunity to get out to the field and actually utilize that space, not just be inside, so we've thought about the location of that. Our marching bands are also a big part of the fall, and we want to make sure that they have ease of access, ease of storage for their instruments, for their productions as they put together their marching band season. It's been really an exhilarating conversation to think about all of the possibilities that are going to be happening for these students in this building, and also keeping in mind that even though some of our other high schools don't have exactly what's here, we are working to think, how do we expand and broaden some of the thinking as we are helping them grow in the areas of what's happening in their classrooms as well? So it's just been a very exciting conversation that's been occurring.
Any questions?
Mrs. Gauding?
So I know that I had a few questions, and I have a new one, so sorry. You know how that happens when you're looking at things. So I'm looking at the 60th and L site, and one of the things I'm seeing, which I just don't know the distance between home plate for softball and baseball, and if you have games going on at the same time, are the softball fans who are watching going to be hit by foul balls? I just want to, I don't know, I've been in enough games where you make sure you have the umbrellas. the umbrellas so that when you're getting beaned. I'm just curious.
I don't know definitively. We can study some of that site distance. And again, some of this is schematic, so looking at rotation and different angles, there's definitely optimum locations for fields because of sunset and all kinds of different things. So that's something that the group will study. But I will have to follow up on that probability analysis.
Okay. And I just, yeah, having been to hundreds of baseball games, I think I'm fairly familiar on that front. Okay. So my set of questions, and I want to first of all thank everybody who was a part of the trip to Kansas City, and where we got to visit those wonderful, wonderful sites, and get to expand our thinking, and really be way outside the box in how we think about things. So when I looked at the 156th and Ida site, the things that, and I know it's conceptual, so I just want to toss out a few things that I thought were really valuable while we were touring, was that whole open concept library kind of connectivity with where students are collaborating and at versus a separate location. I really loved that concept, and in talking to kids, I felt like what they were saying was, we use it more, we see the value of it, because it's right in our space. It's right where we're kind of having lunch, and it's all there. So I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that as we go about this, and even as we think about some of our other buildings. The other, one of the items was the orchestra pit, and just wondering if we've taken a look, or if it's cost prohibitive, to use technology where we're just simply piping in the music from orchestra and band versus actually having a physical orchestra pit. I think about safety, and maybe I think about it when I'm at Burke, and I'm always thinking, oh no, don't fall in that thing, as you're all doing these wonderful productions. And so I would just like to know if there's the opportunity to not build the orchestra pit, but go ahead and do what we saw, which is simply that, using technology to connect all the music into the auditorium.
And that's certainly something that'll be considered as part of the overall design. There'll be a specific consultant, that's a theater consultant, that will help not only answer and help analyze some of those questions, but acoustics and all things that are auditorium or theater-driven. So we'll make sure we run all those to grounds as well.
Perfect. And then the other thing that I think I fell in love with, and I don't know as well if that's cost prohibitive, or if it's something we can think about, but just, and hopefully I can describe this well enough, and if board members who were there need to add to that, that's totally fine. Where at the back of the auditorium, where there was that foldable wall, and then above that was the space with all of the chairs shoved up against the wall, so that if you needed additional auditorium space, you pull down the chairs. If not, you leave the wall closed, you leave that open space, and you use it for, whether it be the wrestling room, or a guest speaker, or some class, because you didn't have space for that class. So I guess I just want to make sure that we're open-minded on that, as we look at how we lay out this space. And then I think one of the things that I would love from the district is if you could provide to us periodic updates on the status of the Y. programs, because we've certainly, we've certainly, having sat through the design of this, and I think it came out really, really well, and I'm really excited about it. But we certainly designed a lot around, especially a lot of that entrance around the Y., and I just want to make sure we're, we stay on target, and that we periodically, as a board, are updated on what the status is, so that we don't lose sight of where we're at. I think that's going to be really important. And then I appreciate just your conversation about getting into the details later, as we think about whether there's lockers, and how many lockers you put in, and if you have designated, you know, I kind, I love that designated grade-level location, so that when you come into the building, and probably when you leave at the end of the day, you're with your peers at that grade. I just heard really positive comments from students about feeling connected to their peers at their grade level, but also having the opportunity to go other places, but then not feeling, as a freshman, the senior threat, or, you know, not that there's a real threat, but, you know, feeling like the littlest guy on campus. And so I just appreciated some of the perspective that the students brought on that, and hope that we keep that in mind. I thank you for creating classrooms that aren't teacher-owned. I heard really positive things from the students, saying that they love the fact that you could be in that classroom for history, or English, or whatever, and you just, everything was flowing, and it wasn't like anybody owned a space. So I appreciated that concept as well. So thank you so much, and thank you for answering my questions.
Definitely.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I wanted to know if the security personnel that we have on staff has been involved in some of the design process, kind of echoing what you were saying about that flow of adults mingling with the kids at the Y., and their entryway, how that's going to kind of play out later on in the design phase?
So, yes, and in addition to district, you know, input and guidance, there will be an independent security consultant that will really provide two functions. One is to look at the physical design and provide, oh, maybe you should move this, or look at the line of side, or angles. And then the other aspect of it is, hey, operationally, with this type of layout, here are some of the best practices or things that can be considered. So a lot of benefit of making sure that that safety continuum is not just building-focused, but operationally, as it transitions into student use and staff use, these are the themes, these are some of the processes associated with this type of design to be the safest it can be from a student-use perspective. So have an independent expert or company that's independent, that will study that specifically, and then provide the design team direct feedback on, again, tweaks related to that, and then meet with some of the district operational side, and have those conversations as well. So fully integrating on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Ryan?
We have all the stairs marked, but I just want to know about the accessibility of both of the buildings.
Hundred percent accessible. Yep.
Mr. Broman?
Is the Y. committed to building a facility?
Well, I think the board has seen the letter of intent that the Y. has signed at this point in time, that that's, there's no formal agreement. Obviously, the board would need to approve that. I think the district's still working on what the arrangement of that agreement would look like, the actual structure, if it would be similar to like a boys' and girls', girls' club agreement, where the district ultimately owns the facility, the Y.'s kind of a tenant. Some of those parts and pieces, I think, are still being finalized.
At what point will it impact the construction to not have that commitment?
Well, the location of all the spaces from a Y. use perspective are in locations where they could be extracted from the design without impacting the design of the entire school facility. So they're kind of on the periphery. Also, from that perspective, we wouldn't want to put the district in a position where dirt's moving, and there's no financial commitment from the Y. perspective, because you're kind of too late. I would expect over the next, you know, month or so, we really need to get to some finality, just because there are decisions on integration of the physical spaces, and ultimately to not, I hate to say, kind of delay the design team and say, hey, here's a curveball, we need to take out 20,000 square foot. Even though some of it's easy, there's still some pieces that are a little fuzzy, where corridors connect in different pieces. So just to be efficient use of the overall schedule, that's something that we'll need to stay on top of over the next month or so.
Okay. Good, I'm glad I asked, I didn't realize there was that imminent. Can you remind me what a maker space is?
Susan?
A maker space would be something that you could actually, excuse me, it involves career education, where you're actually going in and actually creating, problem-solving, there's work to go in and do collaborative work inside that area. Most of it happens right inside of our library spaces. Some of the spaces you're seeing for career education, they are more of an open shell, and we're still deciding yet what we're going to be putting in there at this time for career education. We're waiting to see what, where the needs are going to be coming.
Do you anticipate having the same number of maker spaces at the two different high schools?
I believe that they are the same, yes.
So one of the things on those types of spaces is really just focusing on the infrastructure, making sure power and floor spacing, and the type of construction really accommodates whatever that maker space turns out to be. Because right now, maybe it's robotics, maybe it's something we know about, but in 10 years, it's probably something we don't even know about yet, from a technology perspective. So just making sure, are we going to have adequate power? Are we going to have adequate space? Is it adaptable to whatever the future looks like for those, you know, STEM uses or maker type of things? So I can't underscore that enough from a utilization perspective. The team's done a really good job of not hunkering down on, this is going to be this type of space forever, and that's just the way it's going to be. We've really kind of turned that inside out and said, how many things can this space really be? We have, you know, 1,500 square feet, wow, it could be almost anything we want it to be, if the infrastructure's right. Okay, let's focus in on putting those pieces together to make sure it supports that type of use.
Okay. Well, then I would encourage more of a mindful messaging on these two schools. I'll refer you to the December 5th and December 7th Omaha World-Herald articles, and the headline, you know, the headline for the South Omaha one, which was a December 7th meeting, talks about, the new OPS High School in South Omaha will have maker studios, marker board walls. Whenever I keep hearing about the West Omaha High School, it's, you know, what the kids will see in college. It's university-esque. And it sounds like that's, it sounds like it's a messaging issue. Because if these schools are going to be similar, you know, I don't know if there's some implicit stuff going on, but I've heard a lot from constituents and others who question those descriptions of two different high schools.
I attended both of those sessions, and they were almost identical. It was just what they chose to put in the paper, but the content of the, in the PowerPoints for both of those were almost identical. So I, it was just what the newspaper chose to put in, and I don't know why that they did that. But the, I mean, I don't know if they were 100% identical, except for the...
The images are different.
The images are different, but the content was exactly the same.
I heard the term university asked for the West Omaha High School tonight.
That was the, that was the license of the writer of the article. It wasn't the messaging that was given by Mrs. Christopherson.
Okay.
Dr. Logan, I think you have a question?
I wanted to, there were a couple of terms that were used that I, that are not for us mortals, and I wanted to talk about what the top-loading meant, and what the benefit is to the community of having a top-loading gym. I thought that was something that maybe the public would be interested in. And I also shared the, concern was not the right word, but the delight of seeing the spaces that we saw in Kansas, and those open spaces, and do look, hope to look forward to having some spaces that, they were remarkable spaces that I know our kids deserve, and hopefully we'll get to see those. But that was just the only thing that I thought about, yeah.
Sure. The top-loading gym is really, as it sounds, it allows spectators to enter from the top of the gymnasium. And one of the real benefits of that is it keeps spectators off the playing surface. So from a user perspective, depending on the overall layout of the gym, sometimes they're, they're kind of snug on the end walls, and folks have to walk out onto the playing surface with snowy shoes, rocks, and it just can be detrimental to the floor. So the top-loading gym really kind of helps with that from a pure loading perspective. I think the district has a couple of locations that have top-loading at the, at north, and then I think maybe even a middle school or two. So, but where that's not an opportunity, one of the things that we're being real cognizant of, again, is that end spacing of the walls, to make sure there's plenty of mobility for spectators to come in and out, so that they're not impeding on the playing surface, so...
Mrs. Gotti?
So I didn't ask that question. I know 60th and L. is top-loading, is 156th and Ida?
Not at this time.
Okay. If there's an opportunity to do that, I think that that creates tremendous safety. I always see it as a safety issue, because you don't have people who are coming into the building down on the floor, and both Davis and Buffett are top-loading, so where my kids went to middle school, I'm pretty familiar with the benefits of that. It really does create a more safe environment, I think.
Dr. Holman?
With the top-loading gyms, will the locations have the opportunity to have that upper track, as we saw in Kansas City? Do you know?
I'd have to follow up on that. I don't recall off the top of my head, I apologize.
And I believe our in-house counsel's going to give an update on the YMCA timeline and contract?
We just actually met with their legal counsel this morning, and we are starting negotiations with the Y. on, moving forward on getting a contract between the two parties.
But in the timeline, it will be similar to what Mr. Summers said, about a month, where the board will be?
And we're working forward as soon as possible, as soon as we can get that agreement to come together, that would be, we're working as fast as we can on that.
And that will be an MOU or a contract?
So the district would start with a basic contract, you know, overarching contract, and then we'll delve into the details as we get further into them. So, you know, whether or not you say, share towels, whose responsibility is to wash those towels, that stuff will come later. But we're going to do a big overarching agreement to start, and then we'll fill it in as we proceed forward.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Megan? Mr. Broman?
So negotiations are just starting now?
Yes, for the contract between the two parties.
Can you tell us what progress has been made over the last 10 months, working out the details?
I think that's more of a...
So what we've been working on currently, or over the last 10 months, has been similar to the academic classroom locations. What is the size of the fitness area for the YMCA? What does cycling look like? Where does it go? Really trying to make sure from a building, a layout and organization perspective, that spaces are going to be adequate for shared use, and also doing a lot of studying on, what does integration of the Y. look like from a student-use perspective? And when community's in there, no, we can't have that, yes, we can, what does that look like? So really just talking about, the focus has really been on operationally, with, you know, what would the partnership look like from a day-to-day operation? We've been working on scheduling of spaces, and just to schedule the high school spaces alone is a significant challenge, and then we kind of throw the Y. piece into that, just to really understand what are the shared avenues? What type of square footage does that mean? Because ultimately, that square footage is a part of the agreement, and from a contribution perspective, we need to know exactly how much square footage we're talking about, that's exclusive use, that's shared use, and those parts and pieces. So aspects of the design had to evolve in order to get to a point where you have a more definitive discussion about scale of contribution and scale from a sizing perspective. So that's really what we've been focused on.
I guess I just would ask, you know, since contract negotiations are beginning, it's probably not prudent to speak about the specifics of any agreements thus far, but I'd sure like to hear, because I, I think it was about a year ago. I guess my number one question is, when can OPS students use it? We've heard, one of the big driving forces of this Y. is there's not enough pool lanes for OPS students to swim in. And so my questions have always been that 5:00 to 8:00 a.m. timeframe, and then the 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. timeframe, and whether or not OPS swim teams and students will have access to the pool during those times.
So I might be getting a little bit out of my lane, so I apologize, but the approach that we've had so far is it's school use first. I mean, that's kind of been, that's the starting point. That's really the whole purpose of, you know, the partnership is to do, provide as much as possible for the students first, and then ultimately the community that the building serves as well. So from that aspect, again, that's really been the day-one starting piece. The, honestly, I think on the pool use side, there's going to be a lot of utilization available for students and youth. It's more around the fitness area, that there seems to be kind of some, how do we kind of figure out the timing of that, to be honest? But given the number of spaces and... But given the number of spaces and the staff and the studying that we're really working with the district on now, there is definitely going to be some opportunity for shared space and to have a good partnership. I haven't been directly involved in this, but my understanding is it really will be optimized when the school staff is present and the Y staff onsite, where they can meet on a week-to-week basis and understand, this is the program I have coming up in three weeks from now. Okay, that does have a conflict with you, let's adjust the schedule. The contract will set some larger confines to how that process might work, but it really comes down to the day-to-day people in the building partnering up and figuring out how to optimize the use of the space. Again, with the agreement setting those broader parameters of, you know, again, who has exclusive use first, who has scheduling authority, some of those parts and pieces.
And again, don't answer these questions, because I truly don't want to get into negotiations.
I'm done answering questions.
I'm talking about the negotiations part. I want to respect all that. That hasn't taken place yet. But is it a known quantity at this point? If OPS will be contributing any money towards the construction of the building itself? Is that bond money, OPS general fund money, or not? Or is that...
So the capital facility plan that the board approved, if you recall, has a $4 million contribution towards the Y partnership. So the largest component of that $4 million is related to construction. There will be some costs associated with the design element, but as far as the contribution or the partnership of that, the district's piece of that is $4 million. That was specifically identified in the referendum and in the verbiage of the capital plan to make sure that there was financial contribution from the district side in partnership.
And that is in reference to the pool?
Correct.
Okay. Just so we, because that's what the voters approved. Any other questions, Mr. Pearlman? And as you go through this, I'm sure you're probably going through all the agreements that the Y has had with OPS, just to make sure that is clean, with all the facilities that they share with us, like North High as well as the Center YMCA. Any other questions? Thank you guys so much. We are going to, I misspoke, I said it was I, I was actually just having that presentation. So item I, the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
So motion by, there's a motion by Mrs. Goddard, second by Mr. Smith. Any extensions? Roll call, please. Mr. Ray?
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Goddard?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Naya?
Motion carries. Moving on to item J1, excuse me, legislative update. The Legislative Committee, I believe we meet once a week, and the members on the Legislative Committee is Mr. Pearlman, Dr. Holman, myself, and Mrs. Goddard. And tonight, our lobbyist, John Lindsay, will go over the items that we have taken positions on, and also go over our statements with the entire board. And this is an opportunity for everyone to engage, the reasoning why the committee made that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. The quick update on the legislative session. The session started, I guess it's about 10 days ago, no, about two weeks ago. We just finished legislative Day 10. Beginning of the session, they did reorganize. Senator Grony was re-elected as Chair of the Education Committee. The Education Committee appears to be similar to last year in that, from the philosophical standpoints of committee members, the makeup is roughly the same. The Legislative Committee met this past Friday, took positions on some of the bills. There was not very many, although it looks like a lot, it's really, you're going to see a lot more. There were 739 bills introduced by the end of the day today. Today was the last day to introduce bills. Of those bills, I do read every bill, try to mark it up and summarize it if it has an impact, but appears to have an impact on OPS. From there, it goes to the Legislative Committee, which reviews those, and with input from the administration, will take positions on those bills it deems appropriate to take positions on. Typically, those positions are derived from policy statements that the OPS Board has voted on over the years to give direction to the Legislative Committee. You should have access to the matrix that's been prepared. At the end of those has three of the policies, the ones that are primarily we rely on. The first one, in a nutshell, it says we support the long, it's the OSERS policy, and it says that the Board supports the long-term stability funding of the OSERS.
Sorry to interrupt you, this is on page five of your document, if you're following along.
Thank you. That one's pretty straightforward as a policy. The second one is the TOSA policy, which basically says we support equalized funding. That is, that every child should have a similar chance at obtaining, every child in the state should have a similar chance, similar resources available to obtain an education. So that would get into things where TOSA may not be funding, or a proposal might say, we're going to change TOSA so that it reduces how much aid would come to OPS, and we would bring those back before the Legislative Committee, and the committee would take a position on those, following the mandates of that policy. And the final policy deals with diversion of tax dollars from public schools to schools that are not under a publicly elected governing board, such as yourselves. Those are the policies primarily from which we operate. If new issues arise, if new policy gets developed, or these policies may get revised, and those would be brought back before the Board. So going back to your document, to page one of that document, you'll note that some of them are highlighted in a shade of green, that I can't identify which shade of green it is, but it is a shade of green. Those are the ones that the committee took a position on, again, basically relying on those policy statements. And I will go through those and go through the position. But if there's questions about any other bill that's introduced, please feel free to ask me those questions, and I'd be happy to go through those as well. So the first one is LB-33. LB-33 was a bill introduced at the request of the OSERS trustees that would continue to align OSERS with the state plan. This one deals with the privacy of information of OPS teachers. The state plan limits how much is available under the open records law through the state retirement plan. To bring those into, because OPS has its own plan, you could circumvent the OSERS, protecting OSERS records by going to OPS and requesting that information. So what this does is it extends that, continues that alignment by extending the privacy protections to OPS teachers who are participants in the OSERS plan. And the committee took a position in support of that bill. LB-103 on page two would freeze the property tax request of political subdivisions. It would provide that your request this year would be the same, would be the same as your property tax request in number of dollars as last year. It would take out that growth in property tax valuation, it's that natural growth that would help feed the natural growth of OPS expenses. It could be overridden if a separate hearing were held by the Board proposing a property tax increase. It would also require that the property tax levy would be reduced so that the dollars requested each year would be the same. If a dollar five produced X number of dollars, and that was the request for the next year, you'd have to get it to that, and that might mean reducing the levy to by a couple of cents, or whatever those dollars work out. The committee took a position in opposition to that bill. LB-147, the Student Discipline Act, you may recall from, those of you who are on the Board recall from a couple of years ago, this would allow the use of physical restraint, physical use of physical force on a student. Would also allow a teacher to remove a student that in the opinion of the teacher is a behavior or disrupts class too much, and that student would not be allowed back into class unless the teacher agreed to do so, or if it was required by IDEA. They did add a provision this year to the bill that would allow a series of meetings with the principal, and the teacher, and the student, and the student's guardian or parent, before allowing the child back in the classroom. But it would seriously impinge upon the ability of a principal to operate his or her school. The committee took the same position the Board took two years ago on the bill, and that is a position opposed. Going to LB-158, again, this would freeze the value of property at the January 1, 2019 level. It would allow, if you had an undeveloped piece of property, the property would be increased by the value of the improvement, or if a building was taken down, it would be decreased by the value of the improvement. Otherwise, any natural increase in the value of property would be frozen, which would mean there would be no growth in your property tax base. Committee took a position in opposition. LB-161 would eliminate the learning community, and interesting proposal, I think maybe some inadvertent drafting, would also provide that all territory within the city limits of Omaha would constitute one single Class IV district, perhaps raising an issue from several years ago. But the committee, consistent with the past positions on learning community and protecting the learning community, took a position to oppose. Next page, LB-183, Agland valuation for bond purposes, a little bit scary bill. It would say that Agland would be valued at 1% of market for purposes of bond payments. Obviously, with OPS having significant recent bond issues, this could impact the ability to pay those bonds. Committee took a position in opposition. LB-251, Child Hunger and Workforce Readiness Act, would require that public schools provide reduced price, children who qualify for reduced-price meals would require that they be provided without cost to the student. The committee took a position, monitor with research to check to see what the impact on OPS would be. Not enough data was available, but it's one that the committee thought we should be looking into. LB-314 is a bill that would do all sorts of tax changes in an effort to try to develop dollars for property tax relief. Removes a lot of sales tax exemptions, increases the sales tax rates, surcharge on high-income earners, the dollar increase in tobacco taxes, increase in just about every tax, and those dollars would go to property tax relief. What it also does, and we don't know what the impact is on OPS yet, it would return, increase allocated income tax that comes back to the district to 20%, meaning 20% of income tax generated within the school district would be returned to OPS as part of the TOSA funding process. But there would be other adjustments in it as well. That's why the committee took a position to monitor and research to figure out really what is the impact on OPS's finance. And then, final two bills, LR-5CA, which is a constitutional amendment proposal to limit property tax dollars. No more than 33% of school funding could come from property tax dollars. Would have an impact on OPS, frankly, would have a much larger impact on other school districts because of our already reliance on TOSA. LR-8CA would limit the increase in property tax revenue to no more than the prior year plus 3%, which is, of course, a significant problem for OPS because it does not take into consideration any of our growth, and if we're growing at 500 students a year, we would fall behind fairly quickly. Both of those bills pursuant to the TOSA policy, committee took a position in opposition. I'd be happy to answer questions on any of those or any other bills that you sort of have.
So today, we are, the committee is seeking a vote to support these positions that are recommended from the committee, as well as the position statements. So I will open it up for anyone that has any questions right now for John Lindsay about any of the bills that we've discussed. Mr. Pearlman?
Thank you. First, sorry, I was on that legislative call, my cellphone died, so I was on...
Oh, yeah, we heard the...
I was there for the first 20 minutes. I do have a couple of questions. The first one's about the learning community. After the common levy was eliminated a couple of years ago, can you explain to us what it is that the learning community does and how much money they receive every year?
The primary thing the learning community does is in early childhood, and provides a lot in services. I can't quantify the dollar amount of those services, but it's a significant amount of service.
Who is it that provides that programming?
The learning community itself.
But is it OPS, or is it the early childhood center?
Oh, is it contracted out? Some, I know some is done at the learning community centers. I think there is some that's done on, that's contracted out to program providers.
Like One World?
What's that?
Does One World provide one?
I don't, I don't know that much detail about, excuse me, how it's operating now.
Okay. Well, I guess I'd like to hear from the folks on the Legislative Committee who are opposing this and why they're opposing it.
So you're asking for opinions from each individual of the learning community? So what bill, I apologize, LB-161. So from my understanding, the learning community, they cannot own property still, right? They do have facilities that they educate students in North Omaha and South Omaha. These are students. So first, just my personal opinion, getting rid of the learning community still requires the taxpayers, if I'm correct, because of those facilities, because I was on the learning community when it happened, that the taxpayers are still obligated to pay for those facilities for up to 20 years. So the facilities won't be used, and the facilities now are used to help our kids in those communities and parent groups. So that's one piece there. And then I look at it, in my opinion, if you're saying $10 million, that, those funds there are supplemental funds that help our students, and I don't really believe that if we got rid of the learning community, that the legislature will give OPS that money. They won't. So that's my opinion.
I believe it's... Sorry. I guess, is learning community levy as one half a cent?
One and a half cents.
Yeah, half a cent. One and a half cent, right. I was trying to think if it was one or two. And that shows up now differently after the, you know, combined learning community changed out.
Right.
But Mr. Snow is correct in that those facilities, specifically in North and South Omaha, do provide supports to our students. That funding to pay... Omaha, do provide supports to our students. That funding to pay for those, and they were fairly expensive, the North Omaha one was a very expensive facility, which I sure has not paid off. But beyond OPS students, Millard has connection, other school districts have connection with the learning community on that early childhood piece as well. And I think what's, you know, so what's fascinating, when you go to the North Omaha learning community, you really get to see Creighton University students and Metro students learning and interacting and being educated on early childhood education. So it's, they're live doing their work and their practicums right away. And so it's providing opportunity for not only our students, but for our university level folks to be providing education to help with early childhood. And as we saw in the paper in the last week or so, there's a shortage of early childhood providers. And so I think having the, having specifically that North Omaha facility that is being used in that way is extremely beneficial to our students. It probably benefits the entire metro area, but our students really get a significant impact. The piece that I've heard more about from South Omaha would be the component of educating parents. I know it also happens at the North Omaha facility, but at the South Omaha facility, we've really seen some tremendous impact on parents who now better understand, especially when there's been some, you know, cultural differences of, you know, maybe understanding of how do I provide education and being trained on reading and the important aspects of working with your kids on homework. So I think the learning community for OPS provides a significant amount of opportunity for not only our students, college students, and our parents. So that's why I'm opposed to ending it, not so much just from paying for that facility, which would have to be done, but for the benefit it brings to our kids.
Dr. Holman.
And I'll just echo everything that my two colleagues just said. It would be detrimental to our students, to our community if we were not to oppose this. We need to have the learning communities in our, in our communities to help benefit our students and our schools and our families.
Well, I hope we're not conflating the utility and benefits and all the great work that early childhood provides with what the learning community provides. Because the funding that goes into the learning community, as I understand it, does not support the programs for which you speak. It supports the buildings. And that money is still collected from Omaha taxpayers. It's not like, poof, OPS has to pay for it now if the learning community's eliminated. I mean, who do we think is putting the money into this learning community? It's Omaha and other surrounding districts. And the bill would simply divide the liabilities between the member districts. So I hope that we have a full understanding of what money is going to the learning community and what that money is being used for. It's not my understanding, I could be incorrect, but I don't believe that the levy that is implemented by the learning community goes to fund the programming. It goes to fund the buildings. And again, that money is already collected from Omaha taxpayers. This is, this wouldn't be a new bill for OPS taxpayers. I believe that the program is funded by philanthropic sources. So I just hope that we are all clear about what we're doing.
Mr. Snow, if I could respond, there's just a, just a partial correction that the law was changed a couple of years ago to allow a portion of the learning community levy to be used for early childhood education programming. So it's not, the law used to be that it was limited to buildings, but that is not the case. It does go to programming now. And that was a change, I think, two years ago.
And if this bill were to pass, that funding would still remain. It would just.
No, the funding would go away. It's a separate learning community levy. The legislation does not transfer that levy authority back to OPS.
That's correct. Maybe we're just, it's semantics. But I'm looking at page three, the synopsis of LB 161, and it says that all liabilities will be divided among member school districts.
Yeah, assets and liabilities would be distributed among.
Right. So is it accurate to say that as the law is now, OPS taxpayers contribute to this fund by way of a levy?
Yes.
And if this bill goes away, OPS would also continue to, if they wanted these things to remain, to financially pay for them?
OPS would pay for it out of existing levy. They would not receive the penny and a half that, I believe it's a penny and a half, that the learning community now has.
So if OPS wanted to, they would just have to implement the same levy that already exists right now by way of the learning community?
They would have to fit it into the OPS, your current dollar five maximum levy. You could, you could not access the.
You don't get a dollar six.
Learning community levy that is additional to the OPS levy.
Right. And do we know how much that is every year in dollar terms?
It's, I don't know. That's, that's over a two county, two county area. And I don't know what that generates. I can find that out and get it to you.
Might be incorrect, but I think it's around 10 million for the overall piece there. But for anybody on the committee, if you have any else to say before I open up for other board members, just on this, okay, Mrs. Crackey.
For me, that opens up a whole full new discussion. I'd like to have us have something else back on the agenda, talking about who are our employees and who is over that and who else is getting paid besides OPS people. There's just a lot that I want to go into and look at and know about. And I've seen the figures and I've heard recent people talking about how wasteful it has been. I was at a meeting where I heard this. So I really want to have lots more discussion on this, lots more. I can't vote for this today till I have more discussion.
Mr. Lindt, John, do we know when the hearings are for LB 161?
That, no, it has not been set yet as of earlier today.
Will there be hearings you possibly think will be set before our first, our next meeting, February 4?
I don't think so. No, we don't. Next meeting is February, be first Monday in February, and I don't know the date, but 4th, I guess I did talk about that earlier today. I don't think it will be set before then. But again, it could be.
It's the legislature.
Yeah, it's the legislature and they'll set them as they deem appropriate.
So I apologize. So maybe, let me, real quick, before I go back to this, anybody else have any questions on this?
On this particular one or other?
Just this particular one. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I was going to say that you recall, at least historically, what's been done is if members of the board have an objection or a question.
They usually pull it off and we.
Pull it off, vote on the rest.
Yes, that's, that's.
Then you either vote separately or.
I wrote it already down to do this. But I don't want to make people make a decision if we have an opportunity to persuade them to support that. So that's something that just makes things a little cleaner. Any other questions for any of the positions that we've already, that the committee's recommended in front of the board? Mr. Promin?
On page five, I have a question about one of the position statements. The first one, the harmonization of the board's commitment to harmonizing OSRs with EMPERS. I'd like to know what aspects of OSRs the board seeks to harmonize with EMPERS.
So, Mrs. Gotti.
So this position statement was done.
Several years.
Several years ago. And we've been slowly working through. One of the things is currently a legislative bill that was discussed at the very top of the agenda, which is that protection of the employees from having their personal data accessible to anyone once they retire from the system, so that everyone who wants to be an investment manager for them can contact them. The state doesn't have that accessibility. So that would be one thing that I would see as harmonization. We've done different harmonizations. In 2014, we harmonized essentially the liability issue for trustees and Board of Education members. We had no protection from bad decisions made on investments or other things. So we harmonized that and were able to put that through in 2014. So there are different, and so we've gone through a list. I would ask probably Legal to provide us with that list because it's kind of wonky and technical. And there are lots of little pieces to it. But the goal of this particular position statement was to get us to the place where we were very similar to EMPERS so that there would be no question, once we are back to being funded close to their percentage of funding, that we could merge the two systems. So this was obviously done before some of our current funding issues, but I think we've been looking for a long time to try to harmonize in every way we can.
This, if I'm correct, the board reviewed these position statements last year, right?
Pardon me?
Didn't the board review these same position statements last year?
I don't recall if they reviewed them. Some of them were, I mean, they've been adopted at different times over the years. But I think they are reviewed every year, not necessarily with changes.
At least on the committee level?
Yes. And in front of a whole board at times as well.
I just, I just want to make sure of that.
They've been on our agenda for, Mr. Ray has made sure that they're on the matrix every time.
No, I completely agree. I mean, so it's nothing new.
Right.
You just were seeking a definition of harmonize? Mr. Promin?
Yeah, we have some new board members and it's never, never a bad idea to talk it out. I do have some other questions. Is harmonization, is EMPERS a cash balance defined benefit?
DB.
Defined benefit?
It's a defined benefit, yeah.
For who? For not all EMPERS?
Well, you're correct. EMPERS is, I believe, covers six different plans, including State Patrol, the judges, the school employees, county employees, and I think there's one more. I believe the county employees are a cash balance. I know the judges, State Patrol, school employees are all defined benefit. And I'm just drawing a blank on who the other plan is.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Promin?
No, I guess, well, yeah, sure. I got, I got another question. How many, how many different aspects of the two plans are still not harmonized, which are being sought to be harmonized?
Very little. They are pretty well in aligned, in alignment now. They, I mean, at one point, they were different benefits, different contributions, different, I mean, when you get into how you, whatever the clawback type provisions and all sorts of stuff was different. Over a period of maybe seven years roughly, there's been an effort to, at different times, to change those. Obviously, you can only change them for the new employees, not for, for existing employees on the benefits side. And so they've, they've made changes and that's why there's some tiers, different tiers, depending on when a person was hired, first hired. But right now, there's very little, I think very little that's not in alignment. And I couldn't identify, I think if we could identify something that was not in alignment, the retirement committee probably would have introduced legislation to bring those into alignment.
Do any of these things yet to be harmonized? Would any of them have any impact on the benefits that retired employees and OPS would receive?
No, you can't, as I understand the law, that you cannot impact, you cannot change the benefits of an, of an existing employee.
Right.
Once they have, once that contract has been entered into that we will provide retirement benefits on this basis, you cannot go back and change that without their consent, which so typically what happens is the legislation would say for employees first hired after July 1, 2019, so it would be for those new employees going forward would have those changes. But now the law, in very rare instances, would you be allowed to change the current, current teachers?
Well, I'm not talking about current. I'm talking about future.
Yeah, future you can change.
And does some of these aspects of harmonization impact current OPS teachers? Would they?
Would, when you say harmonization, past harmonization would impact them depending on when they were hired. If they were hired before the legislation that would, that would adjust those to bring them into harmony. If they were hired prior to that, then no, it would not impact them. If they were hired at a time when that was taking effect, prior to their, I mean, if they were hired after that was passed, then yes, it would impact them. It depends on when they're hired. Like I say, once they're hired, you can't change those benefits.
I'm talking about aspects that have not yet been harmonized, that are being sought to be harmonized.
Those aspect, those would be applicable to employees going forward, but not to employees going backwards. If they're already in place.
Right.
Those would not impact them.
And what impact are we, could this possibly have on current OPS employees?
Let me back and, let me go back and correct that last statement. That's with reference to benefits and contributions. You can impact it like on the bill that Ms. Scotting was referencing, on protecting their privacy, not allowing access to records. Those can affect both current teachers and future teachers. I just wanted to correct that some, depends on what kind of harmonization is taking place. Those procedural type things, you can apply to all teachers. But on the benefits side, you can't. So going forward, I don't know what other harmonization provisions will come up. And so to answer that question, we'd have to know what those harmonization provisions would be. And don't know what those are.
Even if we don't know what they are, could there be some harmonization provisions that impact, I mean, I'll just cut to it. How big of a check these OPS retirees are going to get every month?
Is it, sorry to interrupt, real quick. Is there a way that we could, since our legislative committee meets on Friday, to redefine and have the committee talk about the harmonization of that OSR statement that is there?
Sure.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Promin?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we all know what we're doing.
Mrs. Gotti.
So I think what would be most helpful is to ask Legal to provide for us the harmonization schedule, which they've done in the past. It's just been a while. So I can't tell you either what the differences are. I think the other thing that is probably helpful to understand is that when there's a change, as Mr. Lindsay mentioned, it becomes a new tier. And so there are, there are numerous tiers. So I think we have currently about three tiers of teachers or maybe more, four, four tiers. So if you look at the actuary report, you can actually see how many people are in each of those tiers and get a better understanding. So I would, I would suggest looking at the actuary report, having Legal provide us those harmonization items that are still out there. But I think that the important takeaway is what Mr. Lindsay said. If you're in a tier and that tier was adjusted for harmonization at that point in time, that's where you're at. So current employees, only in, I think, a rare circumstance of something legislative would ever be impacted. It's the new employees that would become tier number five or tier whatever when you get to that point of harmonization. So I just want to make sure that there's clarity on that before we walk out the door.
I agree. That's, that's very important. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or anything on here? All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative committee matrix positions, board positions on LB 33, LB 103. positions on LB 33, LB 103, LB 147, LB 158, sorry, LB 183, LB 251, LB 314, LR 5CA, LR 58CA, I apologize, and the position, position statements on TOSA, and statement on diversion of educational resources.
Second.
Motion for by Dr. Holman, second by Mr. Smith. Roll call, please. Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Scotting?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Proman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Naina. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item J 2A, Phase 1 and Phase 2 Bond Program update. Mark Summers.
This evening, we have an update on really Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the bond program. Of course, Phase 1 is slowing down a bit from a completion perspective. Phase 2 is ramping up, so we wanted to provide a bit of an update on, on kind of both of those aspects. And then there's a few specific slides of information related to the inclusion work that we have done really in Phase 1, and some of the areas we want to try to focus on in Phase, Phase 2. So just quickly on Phase 1, from an overview perspective, no student incidences or safety issues to report. There were two contractor incidences. They happened years ago. That information hasn't changed from the last several quarterly updates. Eighty-three overall projects, ten under construction. Kellum is the one that's in design. We're finalizing that. It'll be bid this spring. But all works really on, on course to be completed by August of 19 from a physical build perspective. And the following couple of months will be utilized to close out the, the actual projects, get as built, et cetera.
Real quick, Mr. Summers, could you explain the work that will be going on at Kellum just for the community? If I'm correct, they're redoing the entryway a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, so there's.
Just like, really brief, sorry.
Yep. Kellum was really, the focus is really fire life safety is, is one of the key aspects. So modernizing the fire alarm system, fire sprinkler, et cetera, from a student safety perspective. And then in addition to that, we're doing, working on some architectural items to make the entryway more identifiable, replacing the entryway doors, adding some card access to provide a more of a secure vestibule or entry space, if you will. It's a little different. It's kind of a challenging site to do a very specific controlled vestibule, because when you walk in, you know the restrooms are right there and it's just, it's not easily isolatable. But we're really working on controlling flow in that, that front entry space. And then working through the building and replacing carpet and ceiling, updating the lighting, updating painting throughout, and then doing a different additional infrastructure stuff, a lot of things that people don't see on plumbing pipings and flush valves and just different things that can be a challenge for an old facility to operate under. So kind of a two-pronged approach that, that we're finalizing all the details on, really this next month, and then in the spring it'll go out to bid and work will start, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Just from a financial perspective on Phase 2, you can see the program's about ninety-seven point five percent committed, or four hundred and ten point seven million dollars. Expenditures continue to flow out from there at three hundred and fifty-two million dollars. So all of those data points are tracking well. Still forecasting a complete utilization of the four hundred and twenty-one million dollars in total referendum. Some of those dollars are unallocated from a project perspective. In the example of Kellum, it's not bid, so there's not a contract tied to those dollars yet. So that's what some of that unspent forecasted money is. Still continue to run under utilization from a program contingency perspective. So over the next couple of months, we'll be working with the school district, of course, on identifying what are program savings, and then what's the pleasure of, of the school district and the board on how to utilize those savings on additional leads that are out there. But financially, program's in really great shape to continue to meet all the commitments that have been made. Kind of transitioning into Phase 2, hey, we're on time and on budget, so that's, that's really, really good. No issues from a student safety or contractor perspective, because there's really no onsite activity happening. There's 25 total projects, and 11 of those are in design. So over the next couple of months, there's a few more projects that will move into design and will be, half of the projects in Phase 2 will be started. Of course, there's larger projects in Phase 2, so their durations is longer, are longer, sorry. But just from a total count, really moving quickly on getting the projects moving forward. From a financial perspective, the board approved, I think, a few contracts this evening from a construction manager perspective. So the total commitments will increase. Currently, they're sixteen point four million dollars, expenditures at about a million dollars. Of course, forecasting a complete utilization of the four hundred and nine point nine million dollars. And from a program contingency perspective, one of the things we've started to forecast is the cost related to the site development of the high schools. So if you recall, when we built the, the Phase 2 budgets, one of the things that we budgeted inside of program contingency was the cost for site development related to the high schools, just not knowing exactly what that was going to consist of from, again, from a city perspective, how much grading, what's all the site work, what's the existing utilities? None of that stuff was really known at the time that that program budget was established. So now we're understanding what that site development work looks like. So there's about a twenty million dollar program commitment towards the two high schools to develop their sites fully for build. That's something that we anticipated doing really from the time we built the budget, so it's not an unanticipated forecasted expenditure. Going to transition now into.
Real quick, before you move on, could you, just for, not just the board, but the community, explain to us when the next tranche for the bonds to go out?
Yeah, so actually, we had a CBOC meeting this morning, and Bruce Lefler, who oversaw the, the bond sales, was there and kind of explained a little bit about the eighty million dollar tranche that was sold, kind of finally closing on, on that. I believe there was about an eighty-one million dollar in total proceeds received, so there was a little bit of a premium received there. And right now, what we're looking at is the eighty million dollars basically taking care of the bond expense for about a year. So back up a couple of months when the, the previous tranche was sold, planning on doing something probably more in the range of a hundred fifty to two hundred million, just because that's a lot of capital needed, of course, when the high schools really start coming out of the ground. A lot of other buildings will be coming out of the ground at that same, similar point in time. So the eighty million dollars again is some of the upfront projects and kind of startup costs for, for the high school side of it. Then there'll be a large tranche. And then the way that the Phase 1 tranche was, third tranche was handled is similar how Bruce is kind of projecting the third one. And this is, depending on premiums and all the other things, at the end of the day, the final tranche will be adjusted to make sure total proceeds is the four oh nine point nine million dollars minus the cost of issuance. So handling it from a process perspective exactly the same way, so, so again, that was something that we briefed the CBOC members on this morning.
December, you think?
Yep, correct.
Thank you.
Yep. So transitioning into Phase 1, going to talk a little bit here about some of the outcomes of the Phase 1 Economic Inclusion Program. In May of 14, the school board approved an economic inclusion plan. Really, there were three or, three or four main core pieces to it. Was, the intent was to increase the number of small business participation and bidders, level the playing field for those small businesses when it comes to competing for work, and then providing access to documents and communication and plans to those small businesses. So some of the data that we've tracked against those particular pieces is, is what I'm sharing with you this evening. So over the past several years and all the projects that were bid in Phase 1, you can see here there were three thousand five hundred and fifty different times that small bidders were notified and contacted about bidding opportunities. The one thing I will say before, I should have said before, all this is possible because of the relationship with the prime contracting community. The school district doesn't procure large construction work directly. They have to work with a prime contractor to procure that. So a lot of those individuals are still great partners and really embrace the, the initiative of working with small businesses. Of the three thousand five hundred, one thousand two hundred and ninety-three bids were received, and of those bids received, two hundred and nineteen resulted in award of work. From a leveling the playing field perspective, one of the things that we worked on a lot upfront was updating the contract language, the request for proposal language, request for qualifications, and then there's a specific selection criteria for architects and construction managers. All of those documents were updated to enhance and encourage, and in some cases, put inclusion as a weighted scoring criteria, which is just really a necessary piece to have a really inclusive process. You got to have it in the contract language. The other thing that was significant as far as leveling the playing field was the unbundling protocol that, that we, Jacobs uses on the large projects to break them down into smaller pieces. And really, again, that's just to, to level the playing field, just as it says it gives a small business opportunity to bid on smaller packages of work that were, are within their bonding or within their capability of work. So that's one of the things that we worked closely with the prime contracting community on and got feedback from them, that they really preferred that we break down the work into the package, so they're all bidding the same scopes of work, and they're not uniquely trying to break up the work on an individual by individual basis. Providing the technical assistance, of course, we have the Jacobs Construction Academy, have 50 different participants that came through and received training on plan reading and estimating. OSHA 10-hour safety was provided, also provided them information on contracts and schedules and billing and just all the fundamental things that it takes a, a commercial construction business to have a foundation of. The intent of the academy wasn't to bring a, a two-person business in and turn them into, you know, Kiwitt tomorrow, but it was just to make sure that everybody that at least participated had a good understanding of some of the fundamentals that are necessary to grow into a commercial business. And then in addition to that, we provided some refresher courses just over the periods of time, really focused on estimating and plan reading. And then we're able to use spaces like the Do Space to go, give, get the small businesses access to computers, help them produce business cards and marketing materials, and those things that, again, are kind of fundamental to promoting their business. The other significant piece from a technical assistance is something that the school board has done where, has approved payoffs twice a month. And cash is king in the construction business, like it is almost in everything. So making those dollars available to small businesses two weeks sooner than a month, let's say, is significant, and it's significant for the large businesses as well. It just makes the, the cost of them doing business or loaning money much shorter, so they just have to pay less interest and, and it costs them less money. So big, big deal. That, that was one of the most significant things that were done, is freeing up those dollars to the small businesses. The other item here I'll mention is just promoting access. One of the big things was just, on a, on a regular basis, trying to identify and remove barriers. So one of them that we identified was trying to have more locations to house the plans when there are opportunities to bid documents. So we connected with a few different community-based organizations that already have maybe micro business programs or already do outreach to small businesses, and asked, hey, do you mind hosting our plans? There's just a sign-in sheet and a few things that need to be checked off, but as these businesses come in for different services and they're construction-related, that you can offer up the plans, or they might come in here to look at the plans, and then you can offer up different services. So trying to leverage what was already in the community. And then just in a general, from an outreach and networking perspective, had, had specific pre-bid meetings that were focused on SEB and unbundling scopes of work. Had many different outreach events here at the TAC building, at, at project sites, and then teaming up and partnering with other community entities as well, all, all in an effort to really make sure there was clear understanding of the inclusion program, and then the, the process associated with doing work for the prime contractors or doing work for the, for the school district. And a big piece of that was just very transparent and visible communication about those parts and pieces. But ultimately, there was an aspirational goal set of seven percent. Current goal that's being achieved is eleven point three five percent. That is the, the yield of thirty-five Tier 1 small businesses receiving work and seventy-five Tier 2 businesses receiving work. In our, and I will note, just in the monthly report from a CBOC perspective, I know that's provided to the board, there's, there's additional details as far as kind of dollars and companies and projects that's provided on a, on a monthly basis. This is just kind of a roll-up summary of that. One of the things, you know, that, that of course, we're proud of, kind of the impact and the results is, you know, the, the Construction Academy, but we, we put this graphic together just to really show the significant climb and really the delta of dollars spent with the small businesses. You can see that if, if we took seven percent of the dollars that were allocated to be part of the inclusion program, that'd be about twenty-two point seven, twenty-three million dollars. That's that gray ghosted in line. The light blue line that you see is the current commitments that are being provided, that's that eleven point three five percent. And then the dark blue line is just expenditures that follow that. But you can just see from a visual perspective of the significant difference between, again, kind of the aspirational goal and what's being achieved. Just a couple of other data points. Over the last year or two, we also worked with the, the School District Research Department to, to try to find different ways to collect information on the program, not just by talking to folks and talking with primes and looking at contracts, but put out a survey, and there, these were a couple of the questions asked to the small businesses. Seventy percent of the responding firms, one worked with the school district. Sixty percent of those firms hired additional people, so that's a different way we kind of measure the impact of the program. And then the other, the other way is sixty-five percent of the responding firms, one worked outside of OPS. And that's really a, a bigger achievement maybe than on the surface it looks like, but it's one thing to, to successfully do work inside of an organization that has a dedicated inclusion program, is really set on including small businesses, and it's another thing for these firms to win work outside of kind of that environment. A lot of the prime contractors have had good success with these small businesses, so they're taking them to other projects. And then no different than kind of in the 2014, the market's busy and, and those small businesses are those, are those little gold nuggets out there that we want the primes to communicate more about, but they get kind of selfish too, because they know they have a good, you know, a good contractor that does good work, reliable, so they, they kind of use them on other projects as well. So that, that's a really good indicator. So one of the, one of the, with, with all of that information, wanted to talk a little bit, I, I mentioned before, we're talking a little bit about Phase 1 and Phase 2. So what we're working towards right now is all the things that we've done in Phase 1 from a process perspective, continuing to work with community-based partners, continuing to unbundle the work, continuing to get feedback from the prime contractors. But there are a couple of areas that we want to put a little bit of additional focus on. I'm going to touch base on the student engagement program first, and then I'll walk into a little bit of the workforce development program as well. As part of the student engagement program, which is really a long game workforce development type of program, we've been working with the, the CIS department to create a, a listing of different activities that we can pair subject matter experts with, where they can come into the classroom space and really engage students, whether it's on pouring concrete or doing design modeling in its virtual reality, or it's looking at the financials of a bond program and a project, or if it's looking at, from a social studies perspective, how does a bond program come to be and what does the campaigning look like in the statute and all that good stuff. So the intent of this program is to provide multiple exposures to students along their school life. It's not about Mark Summers standing up and just doing a career day for an hour and then hoping students want to pursue a design or construction-related career. It's, it's really about how do we get their hands into some of these different activities that really are supported by the curriculum, and that's why we're really working closely with CIS to make sure there's a good connectivity between the activities and the curriculum. But it's, again, it's, it's about that multiple exposure along the continuum, it's not a singular point in time. So you'll see here in a little bit about some of the goals related to the number of students that we want to try to connect with. And then as students transition out of, you know, school age into post-secondary, we're working with different entities to try to understand what pre-apprenticeship opportunities are out there, are, are training. We'll talk a little bit about a boot camp that we're working on, what internships are available. But again, all in an effort to provide exposure to largely construction and design. And I say that, and it's not about bricks and mortar and hammers. Technology, for example, there's a significant need of young minds that are really good at gaming and first-person stuff, because there's so much modeling happening in design and architecture, and those folks are designers and they're architectors. and architecture, and those folks are designers and they're architects. They don't necessarily know how to manage all of that data and work through those systems. So, trying to make sure that students understand, even though this is construction-related, there's a lot of infrastructure that goes into building projects and doing design work that really has nothing to do with bricks and mortar. So, really excited about the student engagement program. And really, the other big piece I'll mention about that is all the subject matter experts. So, we've updated some of the contract language to require so many student engagement activities by the designers, so many by the construction managers and the general contractors. So we have a great pool of subject matter experts. We, of course, have a great pool of students, we're just finding a way to connect all those. That's some of the work that we've been working on. So based on that information and some of the successes, gosh, from Phase One, we'd like to, or we're recommending setting a goal, an inclusion goal of fifteen percent. That's over double the previous goal. I mentioned we're at eleven point three five percent, so fifteen percent will be a little bit of a stretch. We are doing some studying right now on the certification in the marketplace and the registration, just to make sure that we have a good understanding of the capacity of the marketplace and what it can bear. And again, these are just kind of targets and areas of focus that we've identified. From a workforce development perspective, we're working on targeting eighteen to twenty-four year olds, and we're working with some community-based partners to put together a boot camp, and it's about a six-week-long program. Four weeks, the first four weeks are really, you know, strength finders, understanding what kind of work these individuals may want to take up from a career perspective, just professionalism and just some of those other pieces. The last two weeks are specific to the construction industry, so it'd be about job site safety, first aid, understanding what different construction binocular is out there, what some of the equipment is. And then we're also trying to get input from the prime contractors and the folks that are going to be employee partners. What are some training pieces that we need to look at? And on here I mentioned the employee partnership and commitments, and really what that's about is the businesses that the district does work with, they're in need of different labor positions and different skill sets. So, what we're looking for them to do is give us commitments of, in the spring, I need three people. So now we have three jobs. This boot camp is going to connect, the participants of the boot camp are going to be connected with those jobs. So, what we want to do is try to place eighty percent of the participants. Right now, we have two boot camps scheduled, and the goal is to have fifteen to sixteen participants in each one of those. Based on the current work in the marketplace, I think we'll probably have more job opportunity maybe than participants. We have to figure that out a little bit, but there's a lot of opportunity for that, and a lot of folks are kind of stepping up from an employee partnership perspective. And then I mentioned briefly the student engagement program, but right now the goal is really to try to target ten percent of the student population. That's about fifty-three hundred students, and again, it's not one student, one exposure. We're trying to find students where we can have multiple exposures over the course of the four or five years of the program, again, to make sure we're giving them the most information to make career decisions as they can. It is curricular-driven. Subject matter experts will be the ones really helping facilitate and running the exercises and activities, and it will be hands-on so it's engaging for the students. That's just a high-level look. Tonight's an information item, we're looking for a little bit of feedback on, from a Phase Two goal perspective or kind of area of focus. If you recall, these are the same areas of focus that we had in the past, we're just trying to elevate and kind of take them to the next level of impact. So, the next slide is really just the final closing slide. Anyone can go here and get additional information on the bond program as an overall.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from members of the board? Mr. Prom.
Thank you. Can you tell us who some of these community-based partners are, working with you on the boot camp?
So, we're working with the Urban League of Nebraska, and then we're also, we've just really started some conversations with Latino Center of the Midlands. So we're really focused on the North and South Omaha areas.
Any collaboration with the City of Omaha's Inclusion Department?
Not, yes.
Yep. Any of the unions?
Yes, we actually, that's one of the areas that we're trying to understand more, I would say, at this point. We had some really good conversations with the drywall, Milrite, and exterior union. Went over to their location, saw what they provide from a training perspective, and just tried to understand really where, if they are a union member or signatory to the union, what additional training can come with that for these folks that are looking for jobs? And there's a lot additional opportunity from that perspective, trying to understand that a little bit before we dive into kind of the fitters hall and electricians and some of those other crafts, if you will, but that's an area that we want to learn more about, and how do we help them, you know, diversify their candidate pool as well.
Great. Are some of these under the umbrella of the AFL-CIO?
That I do not know.
Any other questions, Mr. Prom?
No.
Well, I just had a couple of questions. With Phase One and Phase Two, with the SEBs for the Tier One and Tier Two, this is something you can send out to the board when, I mean, it'll take time. Can you disaggregate that data for us, separate the percentage of Tier One and Tier Two of that eleven point three five percent? And also, I know to qualify for that, I know those subcontractors have to have, whether it's a location or a minority partnership in there, and could you clarify that in that? So, and that might seem kind of confusing, but break it down and say, Tier One subcontractors are here, and this subcontractor actually lived outside the OPS. Because what I'm trying to get just for myself, and I can't speak for the board, but how many of those Tier One and Tier Two subcontractors actually live within the OPS boundaries?
Sure.
Just to make sure that we are hitting the target where we really think it is, because it's, I mean, we're above the seven percent. And then, my computer just died. I think you guys sent out three thousand, reached out to three thousand subcontractors. Do you know the reason why you only had half respond, or is there a reason why that, or are they just, is that typical?
So, we don't, that's really through the prime contracting. The way we collect that information is when they provide bids to the school district, they disclose, here are all the businesses that we reached out to, and we don't ask them for, you know, tell us why there was non-response. So, again, it's part of this form and some data points. What we're looking at is really the volume. With more outreach, more bids submitted, more awards will occur. So that's really kind of the trend that we're trying to track and understand, but it is something that we can ask for in the future to get additional feedback on.
Thank you. And to my point on the Tier One and Tier Two, as you know, they're at different levels of capacity, and I don't know if you guys have ever thought of actually setting separate percentage goals for those, or if that's even possible, to overall reach that fifteen or twenty, whatever.
It would be really, it would be really challenging, and to be, you know, as transparent as possible, the goal is there to help set direction and drive, but it doesn't establish the process or what is done. So, whatever the goal, if it was separate or combined, it's not going to change any of our implementation. Ultimately, it changes the aspirational language in the contract. If anything, it gives the contractor a different kind of goal, but the support we provide them to connect with small businesses and the number of outreaches and the strategies behind those, the essence are really the same, because there is no tactical reason to change that. The essence of the program is be as impactful as it can be, and we'll provide all the infrastructure to try to help make that go. So, again, the beauty of so far is the prime contracting community largely has responded very well, and they've had success in the program, so I think we're going to see it kind of flourish, and that's why I think we're also getting good response on employee partners to provide job opportunity, which is another way to, you know, it's not impacting a small business as a company, but it's impacting individual community members that are looking for either a new career path or just a good job opportunity in a solid market. So, we're also trying to study kind of the weight of that impact versus, okay, a million dollars was spent with a small business, what does that mean? Is that equivalent to five people getting a good job for the next five years? So, there's different ways to kind of study and look at that data.
That leads into my next question, or just thought, is if you take company X and you start them on a project and they're subcontracting, they're really good, does Jacobs do anything with that prime and other primes to let them know that there's a really good subcontractor that they can move from this project to another? They still have to bid and go through the process, but really letting those primes know that there's a really good subcontractor out there that, where you could say, instead of just giving them a million, do they take their company from two people to five people when you look at the bond for five years?
Two pieces I'll just quickly mention. We have, we've had a lot of kind of conversation and drafting on kind of a recognition program, so, you know, how do you kind of get rising stars a little bit of recognition, whether they've been a good partner on the prime contracting side or just a good small business, and what's the best way? Because that's really a good way to promote rather than kind of, you know, scaling everybody, if you will, so we have talked about that. But frankly, the best, it's a small community of prime contractors and people talk. And I had a great experience here, and boom, that's going to be the best ticket to get the phone call to the next one. So, what we really try to stress to the small businesses is control what you can control. You show up, you do your job, and you do it well, you're going to be busier than you can handle, than your capacity is. And with the thirty-five small businesses that we had on the previous slide, many of those, all, I think all of them have received multiple contracts, so they're, it's not just a kind of a one-and-done, I had a little opportunity. Most of them have received multiple contracts at different project sites with different prime contractors, so there isn't just this, you know, I have my own contract and we kind of work on things together, because we're really about, you've got to work with all these businesses. So that's been a good metric that we've looked at also, is kind of the reoccurring small businesses with different prime contractors.
That's helpful. I know you guys set a goal of fifteen percent and have your plan for Phase Two. I don't know what direction you're looking from the board, but if so, it would be interesting to find out if you guys can present to the board or just send the document of your implementation plan on how you're going to get to that fifteen percent in the community, so we know the actual how will be, not just implemented, but also how you expect to get to that fifteen percent. And speaking to the superintendent earlier, the student goal is separate from the contractor goal.
Correct.
And then finally, I know, it's all me, if you guys can apply a cost, I know I brought this up in the past. I know probably might be a lot better, easier to apply it for Phase One, but I think moving forward as a district and operations, for whatever bonds we do or anything we do, inclusion in-house, that we know how much this type of program, including the Jacobs Academy, everything's all wrapped up because after the bond work is over, you guys are officially turning everything back over to the district to continue that.
And one of the things that we're continuing to work on, again, is there's a lot of great organizations in the marketplace doing different things, but feedback that we've gotten even from some of those great organizations is kind of linking them together better, providing a little bit more structure to, you know, who's kind of in what lane, and making sure small businesses and workforce development, there's a little bit of cohesiveness across all of those pieces. That's something that we heard on Friday from the Latino Center, and so that's something that we're trying to figure out. We've mentioned this before, our goal with the program is to, it needs to be sustainable when we're not here. So, it's really making sure all these parts and pieces that we're touching can go on well beyond anything that Jacobs would be providing, for sure. So, I'll make a note of that and I'll get the information to Dr. Logan, or to Matt Rick.
Thank you. Dr. Holman.
Quickly, are you able to explain to the board how you determine your goals for the economic inclusion, excuse me, the economic inclusion for the small business businesses?
So, part of it is kind of the current data that we're looking at from what has been, what type of work was Phase One, and what was that volume of work? What was the pool of contractors available to do that work from a small business perspective? So trying to look at, has there been some capacity increase in some of the small businesses? The goal of fifteen percent will be a challenge. About a third of the businesses that were part of the inclusion program in Phase One have kind of uncertified or expired or whatever, so we're trying to understand that a little bit more. But we do have some confidence in the fact that we think we can help broaden that pool like we did in Phase One. We help recruit into that program, so we want to put a good effort into that to broaden that base for an expenditure perspective. Part of it is, what is our, again, our current success is eleven point three five. We have larger projects in Phase Two, so it'll be, just from scale, there's some more opportunity, largely because those projects are done underneath a construction manager. And in that environment, the small businesses have one prime contractor to work with on bid day versus maybe eight prime contractors to bid with on a normal bid day. So, just because of some of the scale of that work, we think there's going to be some good opportunity for some small businesses, again, just because they can work on some early partnering with the construction managers. And then the other piece that we've looked at, again, because of the scope of work, there'll be more opportunity to do some smaller unit price, whether it's drywall, paint, concrete, because not only are there the large new projects, but there's also a lot of smaller deferred maintenance type of scope, and those scopes really match up well with the small business from a capability or a volume of work perspective. We really didn't have a lot of that in Phase One. The scopes were either large where they needed to be unbundled, or they were specific enough where you couldn't, like the fire alarm work, for example, we couldn't really, you know, break that up into packages. Phase Two has a lot more smaller pieces of scope, so it aligns better with the capacity that's in the current marketplace from a small business perspective. So those are the things that we're looking at as far as setting a goal. I think the other piece too is, again, it's really the right thing to do is to elevate it to the next level. You know, we've achieved the goal, did a great job of it, largely by direction by the board, you know, one hundred percent. The board set out the initiative that we need to do inclusion a little different way and have it be impactful, so we're, you know, taking that guidance, and this is really the evolution of that, of the small business aspect of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
So with the information that you're going to be giving back to the board, Mr. Snow, could you also include the number of new licensors and companies that got bonded or the sustainability for them, and then also with having twelve hundred companies applying, two hundred and nineteen, actually get work, was there any follow-up with those other thousand companies that were out there to say, hey, this is what happened when you applied, you missed by this many points, or this is where we could help you possibly get funded the next time?
Yep. Just a quick clarification, that number isn't the number of companies, it's the number of times small businesses submitted. And honestly, that's one area that we worked a lot with the prime contractors with. Historically, in the marketplace, when a business submits a bid to a prime contractor, if you're low and you get the job, you get a phone call. If you're not, you don't ever get a call. So one of the areas that we had to work with the prime contractors on a lot was, in the small business arena, you've got to call them back and let them know what their status is, because it really impacts them bidding the next job or not, because if they don't know, they don't have extra bonding capacity. So if they bid a job and you don't take their number, but they don't know, they really need to know though, to know if they can bid a job that's a week later. So, one of the things that we have been, that we did work on a lot in Phase One, is making sure prime contractors are following up with small businesses. There is some ethics involved as far as, well, you're this much out of range, so, you know, we don't dictate how their conversations go, per se, but I think they have the freedom to let them know, yeah, you were really competitive, you were second, or nah, you were really way off. You know, they can give some general idea to help from that perspective. A lot of it also has to do with understanding how to fill out the bid form, you know, it's some are real complicated, some are straightforward. In the academy, we gave a couple of different samples of how bid forms need to be filled out, but because they start, that's really the start of a binding arrangement, is that bid form, it has to be filled out a specific way, so sometimes there's kind of errors in that. That's another arena, you need to make sure you're calling them back and saying, hey, on our bid form, X, Y, and Z. So what we ended up doing is proactively, at the So, what we, what we ended up doing is proactively at the pre-bid meeting saying, hey, does everybody have everybody's bid form? Are there questions about it? Let's ask, answer those before we're even in the heat of the day on bid day, trying to get clarification, do I write this here? Where do I include this information? So, really transitioning everything to the front end, again, to provide information before it's necessity, but provide it when we're, when we're in the pre-bid environment. So, there's time to ask questions, get clarification and understand what are some of the requirements of bid submission.
And do you have the ability to meet with some of the people in city planning to talk about how they got to 20% or 25% or how to get that number higher? Because that seems kind of.
Yep, absolutely.
It's not a tough goal to me.
I agree with you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions from board?
I, I will say, our, our company's working on a very large program for the city of Omaha as well. So, I think we have the ability to do some data mining on, on their small business, at least in what we're involved in. I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think we'll, we'll have some information that we can use to validate.
One more thing. Can we also look at doing some diversity in the population with the students that we are working with as well?
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we will be intentional about the, the schools and, and students. We want to provide the student engagement program to everybody, but we really want to provide exposure to students that don't typically have construction and design kind of exposure and/or background. So, that, that's very well noted.
Mr. Pearlman.
Yeah, what if anything is done to make sure that companies aren't setting up dummy corporations to pretend that they're a small emerging business?
So, so one of the things that the, the, the reliance of certification, if you will, is based on the city certification program. That's a certification program that's in the marketplace that is utilized really by the, the small businesses. The, the challenge of, of certification, if the district wanted to kind of take that on, if you will, it's a huge, huge FTE heavy process to utilize if you want to become a certifying entity. So, so that's an area that I think if I understand it right, the city ordinance has recently changed from certifying to more registering. So, we're trying to understand what some of those nuances are, just to make sure that, again, that the types of businesses that we want the inclusion program to be beneficial for are still the same types of businesses that are being registered and certified.
Right. Because that was, that was a problem in Omaha. I mean, that's just my own personal opinion from, from reading some of the connections between SEBs and relatives who aren't SEBs and those companies directing work towards those alleged SEBs. And so, I would hope that that's not happening with some of the 800 or so million dollars in our bonds. But I guess related to that is, and I think I've asked this question over the years, you know, I look at the numbers and that I was provided prior, a year, well, probably seven months ago, and 15 out of the 36 that I count on tier one were awarded $50,000 or less contracts. And 34 out of the 71 tier two were contracts of 60,000 or less. But then you see some contracts of a million and a half, $2 million, and those to me are apples and oranges. So, is there a way that we can get data to show that, you know, like, I don't know if that's what Mr. Snow was getting at, to just see, it's one thing to say that we have, say, 100 small emerging businesses, but if 15 are receiving 85% of the money, then it begs the question of the efficacy of the program. So, is there any way to kind of flesh that out a little bit? Hopefully, my question makes sense.
Yeah. So, I think I agree with you on that point, Mr. Pearlman. If with that, when you break that information out for us, could you add the awards?
Sure.
The dollar amount awards that these companies have received?
Absolutely.
I agree, there's a small handful that have. And I'm sure, I think there's a couple on there that have probably been removed off the cities list just because they've probably shouldn't have been a tier, but probably outperformed or something like that.
And that's not to say there's not valid reasons. I mean, if, if there's a bigger contract, bigger project, there is, but I just, I'm just trying to learn more about it.
It's good to know. Any other questions? Well, I think this is, thank you for your presentation on doing the overall bond and thank you to the taxpayers for approving phase one and phase two and the inclusion program. The concept of that nationally is to help underserved communities have an opportunity to make an honest wage and living to be able to compete. And one of the easiest and more affordable ways to do it is skilled labor because we always need skilled labor. So, really being able to do that, not just in Omaha, but across this country allows many of the students that we serve today, their parents and their cousins and themselves to be able to get a job where they could be making 50, $60,000 in the labor field. So, thank you.
Definitely.
And before we move to closed session, I do want to say, thank you teachers for attending our board meeting and staying through the entire meeting. It's not often heard, you probably don't hear this all the time, but thank you for everything you do. It might sound like I'm throwing something at a wall, but you are with our students every day and our superintendent and the district staff. Nothing matters if our teachers aren't bought in and making sure that our students are ready to learn and prepared for success. So, thank you. So, I did wear my little pin today too, so. Dr. Holman.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, negotiations, legal advice, pending litigation, and personnel.
There's a motion to go into closed session. Second, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Roll call, please.
Snide.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Niner.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interests and preventness, prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, negotiations, legal advice, pending litigation, and personnel. Let the record reflect the board running a closed session at 9:02.
[laughing]
Sorry. Hi, guys.
Sorry.
Hi.
Hi.